Good evening.
And Michael.
Good evening and welcome to the Milford Select Board meeting of January 27, 2025, at 6:30 in room 3 of Town Hall. The first agenda item this evening is a signing of the warrant. May I have a motion to sign the warrant?
Mr. Chair, motion to sign the warrant of January 27, 2025.
I would second that and make that unanimous. Your next agenda item.
Hold on, Mike. We're still waiting for Tom here.
Okay.
Let's see if we can get him in. I thought he was on.
I'm not going to vote. I wasn't here.
Okay, Tom.
Coming on?
Nothing, Chris. Just that.
Want us to continue?
Um, we want to give him an opportunity to be part of it here. All right, why don't you do the minutes, do that, and, um...
Yeah, because you...
My administrative...
Yeah.
Do that.
Sure.
So once again this evening, we're going to skip over the December 16th minutes. Unfortunately, I was not here that evening, so we're going to move to the minutes of January 13th. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 13th regular session?
A motion to approve the January 13th, 2025 Select Board minutes of a regular session meeting.
And I would second that and make that unanimous. And again, we did pass over the December 16th regular session and executive session minutes. Our next agenda item is public hearings. Do you have a public hearing this evening? It is for Red Heat Tavern LLC has filed an application to amend its all alcohol beverage license for a change of manager. While the paperwork is in order, the new manager will be Brian Whalen. Is anybody here from Red Heat Tavern?
No, they're not going to be here for this.
Okay, anybody online?
We don't, no.
Because it's a public hearing, we have to ask those questions. And with nobody in attendance in the audience and nobody on Zoom, may I have a motion?
Motion, Mr. Chair. Like you said, everything is in order from department heads between Building Commissioner, then you have the Town Planner, Fire Chief, no objections, Police Chief approved, Board of Health has no issues, all paperwork is in order, and the facility has been there for quite some time, so I have no objections at all, and I would make a motion that we approve.
And before I second that, I just want to read the Department Head Review Form. The Building Commissioner, allowable use. Occupant load is 190 indoors, 48 on the patio. Town Planner is okay with no change. Town Treasurer, there are no liens. The Fire Chief has no objections. The Police Chief has approved it, and the Board of Health has no issues. With that, I will second that and make that unanimous. And that is our only public hearing tonight, so we will close public hearings. Next is our scheduled appointments. The first scheduled appointment we have is, please forgive me, Monica Takera, to complete the transfer of common vicular wine and malt beverage license, approval of revised application. What this is, on March 27, 2023, the Board approved the transfer of a common vicular wine and malt beverage license and common vicular license from Mariscos Lagoones to Monica Takera, doing business as Monica Takera of 206 East Main Street. On August 12, 2024, the Board approved a revised application for the transfer of the common vicular wine and malt beverage license and a common vicular license as the ABCC requested the submission of revised documentation. Monica Takera is seeking approval of a second revised application as the ABCC again requested the submission of revised documentation to complete the transfer. The manager will be Raquel Marin. And again, all their paperwork is in order. And with that, I'll ask for a motion.
Yes, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman. Like you said, the paperwork is in order. This is the second revision, so I'll vote to approve the second revised application as the ABCC requested to complete the transfer for Monica Takera for this common vicular license at 206 Main Street, Milford, Mass.
And we gladly second that.
Mr. Chairman, the time is on now.
Okay.
Okay, we roll call vote if he's going to vote.
He's muted. He's muted. He doesn't...
Yeah, but he's still on mute, so.
Got you, Tom.
Tom on.
All righty.
Okay, we need a roll call vote, please.
Oh, did you make this request again?
Yes.
Um, Tom, we're on the, uh, uh, second revision of the application for that.
Yes.
Okay, so I made a motion to approve the second revised application as the ABCC requested to complete the transfer of this common vicular license for Baraca Taquena at 206 Main Street, Milford, Mass.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I would make that unanimous. Next item on this...
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
Okay, I got a roll call vote.
Aye.
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 There we go.
Okay, and now that we have Selectman Alafon on Zoom, I'm going to back up for approval of the December 16th regular session minutes. I am not allowed to vote on that. Unfortunately, I was not here. So I'll turn that to you, Mr. Mazakelli.
Sure. Motion, Mr. Chair, to approve the regular session minutes of the Select Board meeting of December 16th, 2024.
I'm in favor, Mr. Chairman. I second that, and I'm in favor.
Okay, and the next would be the approval of the executive session minutes of December 16th.
Again, you got the roll call each time.
Oh, because of Zoom.
Because he's there. It has nothing...
Okay. Oh, okay. All right. All right.
Aye.
Aye.
And Michael Stane.
Yes.
Right. And also, Mr. Chair, the approval of the executive session minutes of December 16th, 2024.
I second that, and I'm in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and our next scheduled appointment is Countryside Healthcare of Milford. Here to give us an update, David Consigli, the Chair of the Trustees of the Geriatric Authority, and member Phil C.R. McColey, and the Administrator Heather Labrie of Countryside of Milford Healthcare will be present to update the Board on the status of the facility. And I hear everything is wonderful.
Thank you, members of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you.
Town Administrator. Frankly, it's with great joy that we're here tonight, and we appreciate the opportunity to come in. This particular facility has been and continues to do hero's work. When Town Meeting did not provide the additional funds, which we did not know if they would or they wouldn't, it was a tough decision. I know there was an awful lot of Board members, Town Meeting members, that were not present. I can't tell you how many calls I got afterwards that were, they were pretty disgusting in the vote. In any event, this particular facility, as you probably already know, has the staff and the administration, that it just does hero's work every day. This is not an easy... Healthcare is very difficult, as we all know. Phil will certainly tell you from the hospital side, and Heather, of course, will certainly tell you from the administrative side and other facilities. We're still in the big demand from outside facilities. Today, yesterday, we're getting calls from UMass, we're getting calls from Boston to bring patients in. They want to be in the facility. The staff alone has worked so hard to reduce our agency staffing because help was very difficult to get, and that includes CNA and nursing staffing. Again, hero's work. We've got the numbers down, but more importantly, we've got the census way up. You know, as you know, through COVID, we were running at 67 beds for a 110-bed facility. I think we're happy here today to tell you that it's been pretty consistent. We're running 103-plus with rehab, long-term, and memory care. And the greatest news we've heard that we've been waiting for for well over two and a half years, maybe three now.
Two.
Over two, is the IRS finally made the payment, plus interest, for over $1 million back to the facility that we've been waiting for.
Fantastic.
That was a huge, that was a huge thank you. They also turned around and they put additional interest on that. So we continue to strive every single day, including making sure we have our proper line items in for any future capital improvements. So saying that, it's interesting because, you know, I'll turn the financial side over to Phil because that's what he does, and he's very good at it, and he stays on top of that every single day. So Phil, if you want to kind of just go through a little bit of that?
Sure. Let's, let's talk about our debt to the town. And today, we paid our debt for the May-June period, and we also paid our debt for the November-December period. So as it stands today, we are current with our debt payments to the town. And that, that we're very proud of. As Dave mentioned, it certainly has been a struggle, but we think we'll have the payment for May-June as well. So things are certainly looking better from that regard. In terms of the financials, getting the IRS payment was a big deal, no doubt about that. But equally as important, you know, our financials have turned around. In the month of December, you know, our operating loss was $29,000.
When you adjust... What was it before? After COVID?
After COVID, we were running $250,000, $275,000. So that, that's quite a leap.
Big swing.
Big swing. And if you adjust for depreciation, we were actually cash flow positive for the month of December, to the extent of $12,000, I guess. But that's certainly a good sign. You know, our census in December, to give you some read, our census in December was 101, resulting in that, that $29,000 loss. But our census is in January, so far it's 103. So things continue on the uptick. And a couple of other points, I mean, I wanted to recognize Heather. She's done, she's been with us for a year and a half and really done a great job.
Outstanding.
Outstanding. We've reduced, we've reduced our, our agency help, as Dave mentioned, and you only do that by going out and recruiting and finding capable people that you can bring in-house on a permanent basis. And we were able to, Heather's done that. We've actually, you know, our revenue, we've certainly done better with census, and we work hard at that. It's not an easy thing. So, you know, things are certainly on the uptick. It's, you know, as Dave mentioned, certainly a pleasure to come in tonight to share some good news. And, and at least I forget, and I don't want to forget. I want to thank you in the town, you know, for being patient with us, for one, and then for helping us financially for the past two or three years. And we're very proud to say, hey, you know, you've helped us, and you've been patient with us, and it's worked. So, so far, so good. You never know what's going to happen down the road, but we're certainly on the right track.
You know what the nice part about this whole story is? As you know, and everybody knows, COVID was a disaster. And when we were forced to shut down that rehab wing, which is the wing that carries the facility more or less to a break-even point, that decimated every community. There was probably close to 39 nursing homes that went out of business and closed. That just shows you what Countryside has done. And yes, were those facilities, some of those facilities supported by local communities? No. But those facilities are also numbered facilities. So it becomes a savings hotbed to try and save a nickel here and nickel there and not have the services that the elder generation should have.
Exactly.
And that's the problem with healthcare today. You know, we can't do a one-to-one, but clearly our, our percentages of patients, staffing to patients, is clearly defined, and it helps. When we start getting staff, CNAs, RNs, and LPNs requesting to come from other facilities, what does that tell you? That tells you that we're trying to do things the right way for the families and for the patients that are in that facility. And again, I keep on going back to this thing. We support other, other departments in this town, whether it's the senior center, the youth center, and we know that they, they're from out of town. And I can tell you, 51% of them are probably from out of town. So yeah, we are going to have some out-of-town people, and we are going to have some private pay people. But it's the staff and the administration that has really taken this with the guidance from the Board and pushed everything through. And I cannot thank them enough because the staff is your day-to-day, but it's also our parents, grandparents, aunts and uncles, that they're servicing, local and, and the area community. So with that, I'm proud to say that this staff has been by far one of the best staffs we've had.
Thank you. And in terms of feedback from, you know, patients and families of patients, you know, the feedback on our, on Countryside has been excellent. And, you know, I've been, I've been in healthcare for the last 25 years, and Countryside is an outstanding skilled nursing facility. There's no question. As soon as you walk in the place, you know it's good. And, and we continue to get that feedback. And, you know, part of, of our success is that, that reputation is out there, and people want to come to Countryside. And that's what makes it work. So that's all I have. Heather, do you want to add?
I think you guys covered it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, I do want to say something. First of all, I thank you so much for taking the time to come here and, and doing the great things that you did. I mean, David was saying the facilities are here, but you, as the trustees and as the director, I hear us as well. Just going over some of my notes here, like, and we do appreciate the challenges that you did go through, especially during, you know, the COVID period as, as well. Challenges, like you mentioned, like staffing shortages, lower reimbursements from insurance companies, high cost of just everything altogether. And however, despite these hurdles, it showed commitment and tenacity, you know, and, and you wavered successfully, you know, constantly to, to make this thing work. And, and of course, at the time, there was a lot of unknowns, and now you're putting everything together, and it's really coming out nice. Just to, just to mention where you have such a decent report today, what has been different that you have done now, or what changed to make this work, or getting to work than, than in the past?
Well, you know, we've improved our census. You know, again, capacity at Countryside is 109. During COVID, we were at 70 patients. And we closed, as David mentioned, we closed our rehab wing, which is actually, you know, we get the highest reimbursement in rehab. So we've gone from 70 to, you know, we're at 103. Some days last week, we're 107. You know, we kind of had that feeling all along. When we presented at Town Meeting in the past, we kept saying that we need, you know, 101, 102. And, you know, and it just has taken us a while to get there, and it's maybe more of 103, somewhere in there. But the, the census, growing the census from below 70s to where it is is a big deal.
To the hundreds, yeah.
And then, then in terms of agency, you know, there was a shortage of, of staff and nurses in particular.
Right.
So we'd have to go out and pay agency rates, which were higher. And it took us a while to retool to actually have, we have some good people in the house who've done a nice job with, with recruiting. You know, Heather and Kristen Benson, and, you know, really have done a nice job recruiting. So we've been able to, you know, decrease agency help. So the combination of, you know, growing the census to the, the hundreds, reducing agency help, and then being a watchdog. We watch expenses, you know? We make sure we don't have excess inventory. You know, and, you know, we maintain capital as well. I mean, we didn't sacrifice, and this is a good point, we didn't sacrifice the P and L with not maintaining the building.
Right.
You know, we always want to maintain the building.
Sure you do.
You know, because again, we have to protect that asset.
Raises the value of the asset.
Exactly.
So that, that's really the story, that it's a combination of census, agency, expenses in general, and staff, you know. Yeah, I want to emphasize the staff thing as David did. I mean, you know, over the past two or three years, there's been a lot of rumors that Countryside were closing, were going out of business, and, you know, staff stayed with us. Absolutely stayed with us.
Right.
And it's nice to be able to reward those efforts now. They stayed with us. We're in a better shape, so it actually, it's worked out very well. But they stayed, a lot of staff could have left. They said, we hear these rumors, we're not staying here, we're going someplace else. But we have staff, we have long-term employees here. We're very vested in the place, take pride in the place, and that's really the key. So I want to mention that as well.
Glad you did. Because you, you know, like I says, the, what you, your commitment that you all put into this to make this successful has not wavered. And that's, and that's a credit to, to, to all of you. It really is.
I know, as from a Board standpoint, and probably as an administration standpoint, when that, when COVID did hit, you have to remember, at that point in time, they were paying a lot of money for traveling nurses. And nurses were going on year-and-two-year stints to go to different states because of the dollar. That had a big impact on a lot of, on a lot of recruitment standards during that COVID timeframe. Because it was, at that point, it was all about, I'll grab the big buck as long as I can grab it because it's not going to last forever. And that's exactly what happened. We knew it was going to take two or three years to turn this around.
Sure.
It just didn't happen overnight, especially when you, when you actually had the entire rehab wing shut down by the state.
Yeah.
To make sure we had a quarantined wing.
For the, for COVID and whatnot, yeah.
So, and again, the recruitment aspect that, that she's actually brought up into, she does drop, they do drop, hers as well, but it's even from other facilities that aren't happy there because of some other conditions there.
Exactly.
So it just gives you a good indication of how clean and fresh and continually to be that way at Countryside. You walk in, it's clean as a whistle. You can, you can see through the floors. And that's a good indication that you have someone that cares.
Right.
Is concerned, and is there a service.
And just like I came across this too, from U.S. News, a world, world report, it did say that Countryside Care of Milford is among the elite 16% skilled nursing facilities. I don't know if you've ever seen this.
I did.
Okay, oh, you did, yeah? Okay. Even, you know...
I'm attaching it on the back, it's someone paid for.
Yeah, yeah. But anyway, like I said, it's, it's, it's excellent news that I, that we heard this, and, and keep the momentum going and, and let this continue. You're, you're a credit to the town, and the facility is definitely a credit to the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom?
I echo Paul's comments. I don't want to be repetitive. I think everything you've done is commendable, and it's deserving, I mean, the staff, everyone, it's deserving of recognition. You know, just when a number of people had you failing, and you asked for a life raft, and you did receive it a couple of times, but you made good with it, you know? And that's the thing. Whatever resources you would provide by the town, or as a result of monies that came to the town, you used them lively, and you actually saved a gem. You saved something that, as you touched on, David, has an enormous impact on residents and the people that they love and care for. So I thank you. I thank you as a resident, but I also thank you as a member of the Board for everything that each of you have done to contribute to the success of this agency.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
So let me back up to the Town Meeting, and the word was used, that, well, we can't let this be an emotional decision. And I sat there and said, well, there's somebody that's never had a family member at Countryside. And as two of you know, I did. And I felt that I had a responsibility, as all of you have done, to do whatever we can to continue to provide the service that was provided to my wife. Because to, to your, to three of you, to your point, to this day, I can never repay that facility for the care that was given to my wife. And so to Selectman Alafon's point and to Selectman Mazakelli's, when word got on the street that Countryside was in trouble, a lot of people didn't consider, well, what about the people that are there? What about the elderly that have been there one or two years? Where are they going to go? How about that anxiety level? But it was, it's all a business decision. It's not all a business decision. To your point, Phil, sometimes you can't worry about the bottom line. You know, your heart's got to come first, and that's a hard thing to do, you know? And so I commend the three of you, and I commend your staff, because Town Meeting was pretty rough. But you didn't put your head down and walk away and say, ah. You kept fighting.
Yeah.
And you know what? At the end of the day...
We left there driven to do even more.
At the end of the day, the fight is worth it because now Countryside is back up, it's in healthy, it's a healthy condition. I was just there two weeks ago, and I agree with the three of you. You walk in the front door of that place, you don't, be honest with me, you don't even know you're in a facility like that. It's, it's, it's just, it's over the top. It's unbelievable. And so what people lose sight of is we're very fortunate to have that gem here in this community. We really are. And it's so exciting to hear that now Boston is calling, other, other areas are calling, saying, can we possibly get in there? You know? And, and that's a good, that's a great problem to have. It's hard sometimes, they, well, it might be a little while, but it's a good problem to have. But you know what makes that happen? It's hard work, and the most important thing is care. People that go to work every single day and care. Care about the facility, care about the people that are there. And that's what, in my opinion, and I lived it personally, the care. You couldn't find any better care, from the nurses to the, to the, you know, the people that come in to clean the rooms. Everybody cares about the patients, and that's what makes it, that's what makes it what it is. And so again, I just want to say thank you because I walked out of that meeting and I said, you know what? It is emotional. It is emotional. It truly is. And we have a responsibility as a community to do whatever we can do for all the people that are in that facility to keep it running. And so again, not to be repetitive, I commend the three of you and everybody in that facility because you didn't walk out of that meeting that night and say, it's over. You kept on going. And at the end of the day, you know what? You showed them. You showed them. You fight long enough, you're going to win. And there's an old saying, it's not how many times you get knocked down in life, it's how many times you get up.
That's right.
So from me and from everybody in this community and my Board members, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Again, thank you for your support.
We owe you a lot. We owe you, and this community owes you.
We, we appreciate the support that the town has given us throughout the years. We knew way back in 2005, when we started rehabbing and rebuilding and adding on, it was going to be a landmark piece of property and a landmark facility, and we were right.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Tom, thank you.
See you at the gym. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
David, thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir, as always.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Can I move Scotty up?
Yeah.
Scotty, one. You know, what do you have, Seth? Hello, Scotty. I'm going to go a little bit out of order because we have...
Somebody left their phone.
Yeah, David, David.
We have Scott Christopher Foley with us, who's Chairman of the Vernon Grove Cemetery. And this is a request from Scott Christopher Foley, Chairman of the Trustees of the Vernon Grove Cemetery, to release a sum of $35,000 from the Avis Pond Interest Account on 8/2/43. This sum is needed to trim...
So they're requesting thirty-five thousand to prune, remove trees that need to go. Of course, it's the middle of a cemetery, so it's a very delicate, you know, removal. They're going to use cranes of equipment, so asking for thirty-five thousand, it's a little less, but any extra money is going to go into planting all the trees to replace what we take out.
Again, another diamond in our community.
It is, yeah. That's for sure, Michael.
And with that, take the motion.
Yeah, make a motion to approve, Michael. It's a very well-kept cemetery, the commissioners do a great job there as well as their staff. And this work will not only make the area a little safer, but more aesthetically pleasing than what it already is, so I definitely make a motion to approve this.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I'll make that unanimous, but it requires a roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
An aye as well. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Scott, thank you.
Have a great night.
You too.
Thank you for everything you do. Okay, then going back into our regular order, our next agenda item is the Town Administrator's report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. A number of items tonight, just want to report, and I think you can see, we've started the installation of the new flooring here at town hall. We've completed all three conference rooms. We're going to be installing flooring in the downstairs offices this week. We're going to update the public as some town departments may be temporarily closed, but we're going to keep all the departments open so that if people come in, have questions, need to pay their taxes, or, so they may go to a different room, but we're going to keep it open without interruption. I have a legislative update. State Representative Brian Murray informed me that an act authorizing the town of Milford to continue limited employment of certain police officers on superannuation retirement was signed into law by the governor on January sixth. As you remember, this allows police officers who be subject to mandatory retirement to serve as special police officers until age seventy, and that's for the purpose of following police details, any other police duties arising during the course of police detail work. The second act that Representative Murray said has been signed by the governor is establishing the minimum years of service requirement for a civil service promotion to the position of lieutenant in the town of Milford. This applicant now shall not have less than five years of service as a rank of firefighter or higher within a civil service fire department in the Commonwealth. I want to thank Representative Murray for his assistance in sponsoring this legislation on behalf of the town. I also want to commend both chiefs for initiating the legislation. Third item, we have received a fiscal year firefighter safety equipment grant. It's twenty-five thousand dollars. The program provides reimbursement to fire departments for the purchase of essential firefighter turnout gear, hoses, nozzles, communications equipment, hand tools, and more. I want to commend and thank Fire Chief Mark Nelson for his work in securing this grant. We've received a second grant, it's the fiscal year twenty-five state nine-one-one department support and incentive grant. That sum is one hundred eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars. This is used to pay for enhanced nine-one-one telecommunicator personnel costs. I want to thank Chief Tassino and dispatcher Lisa Trusis for their work in securing this grant. One other grant, I could have thanked Scott while he was here, but we've received notice again from State Rep. Brian Murray, we've received three hundred thirty-eight thousand, three hundred eighty-eight dollars from Mass DEP. That will be used for the construction of permanent storm greenwater infrastructure at Fino Field. This will consist of installing a large subsurface infiltration system along with pre-treatment infrastructure beneath the parking lot adjacent to the field. Infiltrating this runoff will reduce storm water pollution to the Charles River. It will also increase groundwater recharge. Our highway employees will be constructing the system as the town's in-kind portion to the project, which will save us a substantial amount in construction costs. I want to thank Scott, Town Engineer Elizabeth Minini Sanquioni, and Parks Director Jim Azem, as I believe they all worked on the project. One last item, the governor did release her fiscal year twenty-six preliminary budget cherry sheet estimates. Our chapter seven, which are educational receipts, will increase or would increase under her budget approximately five point seven million dollars. Our unrestricted general government aid would increase in the amount of approximately eighty-three thousand dollars. Remember, these are preliminary estimates as both the House and Senate will prepare and vote on their budgets, so it's important to remember that they are preliminary and are subject to change as the legislative process unfolds. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick.
Any comment, Paul?
Yeah, this is a great, great amount of money and grants, so we got to, you know, really give credit to our safety people and as well as Scott to get, there's a lot of money, it really helps out.
Absolutely. Tom?
Yeah, anytime they want to give us money, we should be standing there taking it. No, they've done a great job in bringing in funds to assist and accomplish things such as the drain water and, you know, because that is an issue that Scott's been dealing with for a number of years, you know, kind of behind the scenes, so it's very, very helpful.
Thank you. And Rick, if you could, and I know you will, please, a special thank you from the board to everybody involved that made all that possible. It's very, very helpful. Okay. Okay, next agenda item under old business is town council host community agreement.
Yeah, Brian's not going to be here for tonight. It's very minor revisions, this is the, I don't want to know what time it is, third or fourth time. For example, in one of the paragraphs, they added the word production. Another language, they just clarified community impact, the, they struck some language in the pretty much boilerplate separability clause. So again, minor, minor revisions. Hopefully, this is the last time Attorney Fernandez, who represents Seren Natural, and Attorney Murray, our town council, have reviewed it, both are satisfied with it. And hopefully, this will be the final iteration. We do need a motion to approve the revised agreement.
A motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the revised agreement, which should be the first amendment to the first amendment host agreement for serving nationals.
I second Mr. Jim.
And before I make that unanimous, I'd like to just make it clear that these amendments that keep happening on this agreement is nothing that's being done on the local level. These are requests that are coming from the state, correct, Mr. Administrator?
That's correct, yeah.
And then our town council has to make the adjustments, so I don't want people to think that it's something that's being created at town hall, it is not. It's being created at the state level and we're doing what's being asked of us, okay? And with that, I'll make that unanimous, and again, a roll call, vote please.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous, Mr. Administrator. And the next is new business, and the first item under new business is the schedule of our dates to get ready for our annual town meeting.
Yes, I'd like to set, ask the board to set the date of Monday, May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, to establish the annual town meeting date. We obviously would go to Wednesday, May twenty-first, should a second day be needed. And right now, we're just going to set the date, this will open the warrant, and I will get a memo out to all the department heads and try to start to get the articles being submitted.
Okay. Motion, Mr. Chairman, to set the annual town meeting date for Monday, May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, at seven p.m. at the Milford Upper Town Hall.
I second Mr. Jim.
And I would make that unanimous, roll call please.
Aye.
Aye.
An aye as well. Okay. And we've already done the Vernon Grove Cemetery with Scott Christofoli, so last under new business is a resignation from the personnel board. Dear Mr. Long, I am writing to formally resign from my position on the personnel board for the town of Milford effective immediately, as I have relocated to Tampa, Florida. It has been an honor to serve on that board, and I deeply appreciate the opportunity to contribute to the community. I would also like to thank the Board of Selectmen for appointing me and placing the trust in my service. Thank you and your leadership and support during my time on the board. I wish you and the board continued success. Sincerely, Tarek Miranda. And Rick, as usual, if we could get up.
Sure.
A letter of thanking Tarek, that would be great. Okay, next agenda item is.
Do we get a motion?
A motion to accept the resignation of Tarek Miranda, and like I said, it's thank you for him, thank you, thanking for his service.
I second that, Mr. Chairman. And he's contributed in a number of ways to the community, so he's got some recognition.
And I would make that unanimous, roll call please.
Aye.
Aye.
An aye as well. Next agenda item is invitation to speak. Is anybody here for invitation to speak? Come on right up and identify yourself, sir.
How are you guys doing?
Good, you?
Good, I usually don't do this, but I'm going to do it tonight.
Okay.
So, as you know, my name's David Levine, I'm a member of the Finance Committee, also a subcommittee member of the Geriatric Society. And I just saw, I was watching on TV, I saw what was being said. So I just don't want, they're doing better, but I don't want there to be misrepresentation of how well they're doing, that's all. So there is, so for the fiscal year, they lost money. So I just want to make sure that when you say success, and it's touchy feely, we also have to have a responsibility to taxpayers as well, a financial responsibility. So I don't know what's going to happen going forward, if they're going to put another article on the warrant or not, but right now, at least on my position on the Finance Committee, right now, we're not supporting any more funding. So I just want to put that out there, I just want, I just don't want misrepresentation going out to everybody in the town meeting members, or even to the town itself. It's successful, it's great, everything's rosy. When they say they have a capital plan, that doesn't mean they have money to fix the roofs, to fix the telecommunications systems. They just have the R and M money to fix broken light bulbs or something like that. So I just want to be careful of what we say to the community as far as being successful.
Yeah, they would, it, Mr. Chairman, I know we're not supposed to go, but just, it was just a good start.
It was a great start.
And it was the first time that we heard good news in quite some time.
Right.
And we were just getting a little happy that we knew that it was off to a good start, but like we mentioned before too, there's more work to do.
Right.
But it's a good, good way to start, and like I said, it's good to hear good news about the Geriatric Authority after so many years of hearing negative news.
I agree it's good news, but to say it shouldn't be an emotional decision, it really shouldn't be an emotional decision, for my beliefs. I didn't have family go there, I had a father-in-law that went somewhere else.
Right.
His care was just as good, and it was in Milford. His care was just as good at the other center as it would be at Geriatric. This is all about how much can we afford as a town to give to the center to get the tax base? That's all this is about. It's nothing more, nothing less.
No.
It's all like fiscal responsibility, we're in tough times now.
And David, it was our hope that it continues.
No, I agree.
And like I said, and I hear what you're saying, that we do have other expenses such as a school coming up and everything else, but like I said, this is off to a good start. It was, it was good news for us to hear finally and, you know, with the hope of them continuing.
I agree, I just, I just want to put the flip side on it. I know the flip side is not always the most rosiest side, but you gotta, need to do both sides of the equation on this.
Sure.
Obviously, they are doing better, December was a better month, but you have to look at what happened this past year, and so that's all I have to say to it.
Great.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you, David.
All right, thank you for having me.
Have a great night.
You too.
Is anybody online?
Just tell them.
Just tell them.
They're still there.
All righty, and nobody else here for invitation to speak? Okay, with that, does anybody have any correspondence, Paul?
Nope.
Tom, any correspondence?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
And I do not as well. And we've already been into executive session, so with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
I second that.
And I would make that unanimous, roll call please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye as well.